All right.
You're good.
All right, thank you everyone for your patience as we work through our technical difficulties. It is six oh four P M and I call this regular city council meeting of March fourth to order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Edwards is going to be asking this evening. Councilmember LaLale.
Here.
Mayor for Tim Hard.
Here.
Mayor Green.
Here.
Councilmember Best.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Is in New Zealand.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
All right. Thank you. If you would all please join me for the optional pledge of allegiance, a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's move on to approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any proposed changes.
Hard moves to approve the agenda.
On the left side it's.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all were in favor. Let's go on to public comments for items not on the agenda. Yes, Steve. This is our only working owl so.
They are right here.
So sure. As close as as you can.
Okay, so. Taking over there. My name is Steve Pressesh, one thirty one, Third Street. These are from. February twenty seventh and March third, Denver Post. Three different articles. This was a commentary by New York Times columnist who's been foreign policy and domestic politics. Since late two thousand seventeen. Most shameful vote that America has ever cast at the United States Nations. He was talking about the fact that. The United States approval for a security council resolution that called for an end of the war without mentioning who started the Ukraine. Thing. It's turning the U S into accessory of Russia's crimes. And earlier he talked about. Now, these were three different. Incidences with this individual. There's a whole list of Putin's crimes here, but this one, the poisoning, imprisoning and death of the opposition leader Alexei Navalny. Three different incidences. There was a protest at the embassy in Kiev. Why was the Trump administration pushing Ukraine to sign a deal which appeared to be in its final stages Wednesday? That would grant the United States at least some future profits from the mining of critical minerals in Ukraine. One of the people there said it feels like a knife in the back from your dear friend. Another organizer in there said that Trump is making America very small. But I realize this is just business. He is making money off of Ukraine. This is a statement in March. Alaska Senator Lisa Murkowski, one of the few GOP lawmakers willing to break with Trump publicly criticized Republican president's stance toward the Ukraine. That's a quote. I know foreign policy is not to the faint of heart, but right now I am sick to my stomach as the administration appears to be walking away from our allies. And embracing Putin, a threat to democracy and U S values around the world. Murkowski wrote one X on Saturday. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to give a public comment on items not on the agenda?
Yes, please.
My name is Chris Mabel, five two one, Ellen Street.
Yeah.
Okay.
How do you spell your last name?
M is Mary E G A L.
Thank you.
Yeah, and so I did do a full email yesterday because I was not sure how to do this. This is my first time ever. So I just wanted to propose a complete ban on all fire ignited noisemakers, firecrackers, fireworks, including sparklers and snakes. Now, there are many cities in Colorado that have complete bans on use and some do include, you know, it also to make illegal to possess and to sell. Some, you know, obviously exclude celebrations such as the Fourth of July, some don't. I think Breckenridge completely took away with it. So, you know, obviously every city is individual, but I think across Colorado, the risks are very much the same, especially up here, you know, in high wind, dry areas. So, you know, the fire hazards that puts our homes and all of our historical buildings at risk. You know, I have just a few facts I just wrote down, but you know, for example, this is from twenty twenty two from the National Fire Protection Association. So fireworks actually sparked an estimated thirty one thousand three hundred and two fires in twenty twenty two, and a constant estimated one hundred and nine million in direct property damage. You know, I found an example in twenty seventeen in Oregon, a fifteen year old chucked a smoke bomb in a dry riverbed that then ignited the Eagle Creek Fire, which was fifty thousand acres. It's it took, let's see. What? It ignited the fifty thousand acres, infected the air quality all the way up to Canada, trapped a hundred and forty seven hikers, took more than three months and forty million to extinguish. The boy was fined thirty seven million dollars. It was crazy. So just like a few of the fire hazard risks, but fireworks cause air and land and water pollution. So anything that goes up must come down. So and that includes, you know, the plastics and the gunpowder and the heavy metals and the lead and the copper and the titanium and the aluminum. And so they find that impacts human health, but also find that it's found in waterways and soil. And then it negatively impacts our wildlife and our beloved pets. But and then above all, negatively impacts our residents. So not only just our combat veterans, but all community members who suffer from PTSD. And then it also puts our emergency responders safe together. So I just wanted to propose that today.
Thank you very much. Do you want to give comment for items not on the agenda?
Thank you, ma'am.
Come on up, sir.
Luke's making four oh eight West Seventh Street. I want to say in the spirit of collaboration, thank you so much for another wonderful winter boom days ski drawing. It's so great to see all of the people come together in the county and the city, all those affected for a very, very busy and successful, at least as far as the public businesses, and definitely as far as our organizer, Mr. Duffy Council is concerned. The lack of issues with our horses and our riders, which I know everybody was very grateful for. I know that you have received a lot of feedback already concerning possible things such as trash, recycling, traffic and the like. I hope that you will take some time to really consider these over the next couple of weeks as to what not only business owners are saying, but what also your locals are saying as well when it comes to this. Anecdotally, you know, I've heard run the gambit of everything from very positive to very negative. And so I hope it takes some time and really consider this when it comes next year for the permitting. When it comes to permitting, and I would also like to please put a plug out there for the three year permit to come back for the smaller events such as the Pride Parade, the St. Patrick's Day Parade, the Practice Parade, the Fourth of July Parade, Boom Days Ski Joint, I believe were too big for a three year permit. But I believe those three year permits should come back due to the fact that those things don't really change. They're not really huge impact. They don't really ask for the city and the county to do much. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone online who would like to give public comment for items not on the agenda? If you would raise your virtual hand? Seeing none. Let's move on to the consent agenda. This consent agenda includes our minutes during our January twenty first regular meeting, February eighteenth regular meeting, as well as the St. Patrick's Day Parade T U P.
When the law moves to approve the consent agenda.
Five seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
While we're in favor. Let's move on to presentations and discussions. We're going to start with the city administrators' report.
Oh, ma'am. May I approach with the consent agenda? Is that next? Is that just after this?
It's done.
It's done. May I?
Sure.
Before you move on?
Sure.
Is that appropriate?
Do you want to? I mean, we can't discuss things on the consent agenda. We have to pull them out of the consent agenda.
Okay.
It's just a matter of efficiency. So.
Are you willing to hear updates on the practice, the same as we're waiting this time?
Let's go back to public. Well, this is on the agenda. In this case, Luke, I'll allow it. Come on. Hold on, hold for.
Could the administrator's time, so might have something to add? I just can't tell.
What is going on with our video?
Yeah, I was gonna say, can I?
Connection problem. There's some flashing error. That's new for us.
Is it? Can you guys see that online? Is it flashing pretty well? And is it just enough to want to turn it off?
Yeah, it's flashing.
I've never experienced that issue with it before, so I was not. I'm sorry.
Come here.
You try. I'm going to tie hard.
Truly. I mean, we have more chance for joking than.
Let me try again.
Do you want to just give us an update on what you want to say about the St. Patrick's Day Parade?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome. Thank you so much. The St. Patrick's Day Parade will be at four o'clock on Monday. The Lions will be serving corned beef and cabbage from four to six at the Silver Dollar as usual. Also concerning September, which I've already put the permit in for and will wait for approval. Hopefully that will be soon, is we will be having that on the weekend of nine twenty, September twentieth nineteen twenty twenty first. We will be having the Young Doublerners coming to town. That will be a very rocking event. Most likely at the Tabor Opera House. That'll be Saturday night. That will be a fundraiser for the Irish Memorial and for the Tabor Opera House. Recently, I gotta say, I gotta, I gotta thank Andrew Cummins for reaching out to me. Now, this consent agenda, I'm not exactly sure what that means for this parade, but I was only informed today that I need insurance for the parade. So I'm, I'm interested to know the background of this as it seems that this is the first time that this is happening. Can anybody enlighten me as to what is going on here?
I'll, I'll take a stab at that and then I would maybe see if Florida Simonson City Administrator has any additional comments. It's my understanding that it's been a requirement in the past, but it hasn't, just hasn't been enforced during the application process. So it's been a requirement for temporary use permits period. For, but it just hasn't been applied to this event in the past for whatever reason. So I believe that the staff was catching it this time that that was a requirement. So not saying that we, the staff has, we, we are aware that we haven't required the insurance for this particular event in the past, but we require it for other events and it's, it's a requirement for all events. That's my understanding.
Laura is just nodding.
Yes, that's correct. It, it, for whatever reason, it was overlooked previously and we have to, we have to have the, that applicants have insurance and as Mr. Laton said, we've required it of all the other applicants, so we are just being consistent going forward.
Excellent. I was, this is the first time I heard about it today, right before I moved, right before I came in. I was given the new permit two weeks ago after I originally filled out the permitting in September. So you can see that through no fault of my own, as a personal, as like a public person, without the funds or without the ability to do something like this with such short notice, I would respectfully request that perhaps it's waived for less.
Okay, so we're actually, we can't, we actually can't do this part. We, we actually can't debate. If, if we're going to debate something that's on the consent agenda, then we'd have to go back and pull it from the agenda. But I think that we can reach out to you after this meeting and I, I do believe that we can figure out a way through our insurance company. I think perhaps there's a way that we can work with you, but I don't want to. Now that, if we are going to debate this issue, then we'd have to go back, reopen the consent agenda, pull it and discuss it.
Thank you. I would just like to request that in the future that these issues come up, not, not less than two weeks before. And especially for something that has been in the office since at least September. Okay, that's what I ask. Please, I think that's only fair.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We have just recently updated our, we're just doing a remake of a lot of our permitting processes. So I anticipate going forward, no more short notice or last minute because they're new to us too, but it's going to be better every day, a little bit better.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Say administrators' report.
Right. Well, thank you all. It's going to be a little bit longer of a report because we have a lot of things going on. I would like to talk about ski drawing. So a lot of things to talk about. First of all, I want to thank the police department and streets department. They did a fantastic job. I want to say the crowds were possibly the biggest yet. The numbers have come in. Mr. Ducharme from the tourism panel let us know. I will send this around after the meeting, but it looks like there were about ten thousand people on Main Street on Saturday and March first and Sunday, March second, just over eight thousand. So I think those are record numbers. I really want to thank police and streets for keeping the, the crowds under control during the setup for all that. We had no significant incidents. All the reports that I have is that it was a very jovial crowd. As Duffy Council said, the event promoter, this is classic Duffy. He said, looking down from Capitol Hill, it looked like the ski drawing gods parted the Red Sea on Harrison. So I just want to thank everybody for putting in such a great extra effort on that. I know some of our departments are understaffed, but I, I think it went remarkably well. Yes, we have some. Tony's already, our streets department manager has already been working with Mr. Counsel to make some improvements regarding, you know, porta potties and trash and so forth. I think, given the size of the crowd, possibly the weather helped with that and, you know, maybe a little bit more than we expected. I also want to thank Duffy Council and his team for all their work, especially keeping the tracks safe for all the competitors. I know that was a concern with the warm weather, so just kudos all the way around. I think it, if you've looked at any of the media, it, it really turned out just spectacular, spectacular day. Sort of showcasing the best of Leadville. Other big things that we're working on regarding events. So Lifetime Fitness usually is putting in its permit requests at this time for their summer events. They have submitted some of them, but not all of them, but we are working jointly with the city and the county. Me and the city and the county are working jointly together to make some improvements on, on some of their events going forward to really, really limit event fatigue and boost up some of our businesses. So I did circulate to the council earlier, the deal points that we have been working on with Lifetime. So the city and the county have had two meetings already with Lifetime to talk about some of these deal points. But the main thing is limiting the, the friction and stress and impact on our community while at the same time elevating our businesses. And so we want to, as council knows, we've talked about having a joint work session. That work session is now confirmed for March twenty fifth. We confirm today. Thank you to the county for getting us a room. It will be at C M C from six to eight P M. So we did the, do a press release, the joint press release, I think, went out yesterday with a location to be determined. I've been working on a newspaper ad today, which will now include the location. So we're really pushing to get people to come to, to hear the elected officials who really are the decision makers on what the permits will look like going forward. And the, the biggest changes, of course, are with the hundreds because those are the biggest stress. And of course, the biggest change with that would be the proposal to move the start line from Sixth and Harrison to Community Field or somewhere adjacent to that. So we reduced the early morning noise, traffic, congestion for our residents while still being able to have that business bump by having the finish line at Sixth and Harrison for our businesses. We feel like that's a middle ground that hopefully would, would reduce some of the tension around the race. So council, that means we will be moving your legal training. I will work with Sam Light at CERSA to get a different date for your legal training. Unfortunately, March twenty fifth was the only date that we could get that both worked for the city and the county. That ties into my next announcement, which is the planning department has worked really hard. Andrew Cummins has worked really hard on revising the temporary use permit form for twenty twenty five. That is what we're pushing out now and that's why it's a new one as of now. We found that a lot of our prior permits weren't up to date. This new one is more comprehensive. It lays out more of the requirements for our applicants and also pointing out things they also might need, like an alcohol permit or a film permit or some other type of a permit. And so it's, it's a more comprehensive document. It's been a really big, heavy lift. Hopefully it will guide our T U P applicants better through the process. And also it will be highlighting some of the things that we have come across in the last few years that provide for sort of better process with the parades. We have eliminated the projection of any graffiti, like confetti, glitter, that type of anything that can be left behind and create debris. We're also allowing handing out of things on the event route, but not throwing. So no more tossing candy from vehicles. That is just a recipe for someone to run out in front of a vehicle. So we're making some safety changes, some changes that we've come across the last couple of years that we found are necessary. So. One other thing I want to announce, so if you've all seen, the city is going to be holding a short term rental workshop tomorrow night, six to eight P M at Freight. I want to thank Ms. Bushman for coordinating this.
Thursday night.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. My notes are wrong. Yes, I'm sorry. I'm losing my track of my days. Yes, Thursday night at Freight, six to eight P M. And just like I said, I wanted to thank Ms. Bushman for coordinating this, identifying the need for this and pushing out the word. You know, she's got a lot of great panelists and folks who are going to show up. And so I encourage you all to push out the word to attend this. I think it's going to be a great way to get more word out to our community about our process and hopefully improve the whole system in general. Couple other updates. We did receive a copyback of the animal shelter I G A from the county. We are reviewing that with our city attorney right now and hoping really to what we'd like to do is get a work session, a joint work session scheduled at the county to have a presentation from the animal shelter, giving more background on the animal shelter, why it is, the way it is, an opportunity to ask questions about the shelter, its operations and some of the deal points within the I G A. I think that would be a really efficient way to get that document across the finish line. I think we're very close. We're very encouraged. So I think things are headed in the right direction with that. So that is very good news to report. As soon as we're able to get a date for a joint work session, I will let you all know. Our E V charging station, I'm going to send around tonight. An update on that, as you all recall, we revised our pricing structure on that because we were in fact losing quite a bit of money on that station between the electricity costs and the maintenance costs. So Ms. Bree Ortiz worked on a whole analysis of our pricing structure and revised the pricing structure so that we have more tiered pricing, also pricing that encourages turnover at our E V charging station. And so the report is back and it's great news in that we are breaking more even on the electricity costs. I still think there's an opportunity for us to improve in that, but basically the report shows we're breaking about even on our electricity costs versus what our revenue is. We do need to factor in the maintenance costs, so we will be looking at that and a little bit later to see if we need to adjust our pricing on that, but we are in much better shape on that. Couple of updates on grants, so not great news, not surprisingly in the grant world. We did not receive the Department of Local Affairs grant for our community center. We had a meeting with Ms. Randy Snead, who's our representative, who really explained it was a very, very competitive cycle. Health and safety projects were prioritized, fire, you know, police projects were prioritized. And I think one of the ideas was that we could work with our community partners to come up with a, a, a plan as far as use, which I really think is happening right now with the collaboration group that we have between the city, the county, the school district, Colorado Mountain College, to talk about recreation and indoor recreation use. The group is now finally fondly called the Wrecking Crew, so that group is really kind of focused on that and Randy was very, very encouraged by that. There is another cycle coming up, but it is going to be very competitive. It's about ten million dollars less than previous cycles. So we are trying to strategize if we would like to apply for that cycle or perhaps wait until the fall cycle. The other grant that we applied for, the matching grant, we did not receive that. That grant unfortunately was terminated. So not unlike many of the other news that we're seeing on funding sources. So that was not great news, but not totally unexpected. I think, as we all know, grant money is going to be in a lot tighter supply in the near future. Couple other announcements, open positions. So our animal control officer position, which was posted, that is now closed. We are doing interviews next week and the good news is we have approximately somewhere between eight and ten applicants for that position. So that is good news. We are posting the streets department administrative position. That's a part time position, as you know, to handle streets department administrative matters and especially excavation permits. So we're hoping to get that person on board shortly so that they would be able to train and get up to speed before excavation season. And I believe that posting went up today. That is a part time position. And I was, you know, I always like to end on good news. So the Leadville Herald just released its best of and want to extend congratulations to the best firefighter, Ian Floyd, that I think this is his second year receiving that award. And best law enforcement officer, so that's basically community wide, Maria Porzelle. So congratulations to Ms. Porzelle and best city employee, Andrew Cummins. So I also think that that's possible that Mayor Green received best elected official. So congratulations to all of you. Yeah, so I know that's a lot. At this point, I'm happy to answer any questions you all have.
Gloria, I have a question about the E V charging station.
Yes.
I noticed, I don't see signs by it that say, you know, parking only for E V charging or anything. Is that correct?
Actually, I thought we did. I will double check on that. I'm.
Yeah, I thought there was too. So maybe double check or maybe I'll feel silly if I just missed it, but what made me notice it is I think there should be two spots there because there's two chargers, right?
Well, one is a Tesla charger and one is a everything else.
Okay, so really, we only need to hold one spot.
Yeah, it is, it is two different plugins, basically. And, and that's a good question. I'm not sure you could. And a- and that's a good question. I'm not sure you could run both of them off the same device at the same time, but we can find out.
Um I I actually, Bree uh Bree Ortiz has been talking to me about like some additional information on a sign, and I think I think she's online here somewhere, although under a different name.
I I did speak with her earlier, and I actually believe they're in the process of adding signs. It's my understanding. I'm not sure if they're actually there yet, but they are working on building signs that have more of a transparent communication as far as please only park here if you're charging and you must actively be charging.
Or like the max time.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
But I think they're actually in the work, where we might be with those, but I thought we should fire our previous conversation. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's all right. Thank you.
Yeah, and uh Councilwoman Tharp, I I will double check because I believe I had seen signs there before, and I don't know if they just went missing or uh what, but we'll make sure we get signs there.
And has there been any discussion about adding more charging stations to other public parking lots?
Yes, and the city has decided that we do not have the bandwidth for that right now.
However, there there is this group, and I don't know how how it will how it will develop, but um that had been in touch with both me and uh Adam Ducharme at the tourist panel, who received a grant to put in a bank of chargers. Um uh so they they were very excited about that grant. They were talking about doing something behind the Tabor Opera House. I have no idea. I think they were talking to each other.
That's Mr. Uh oh, boy, I'm gonna mispronounce his last name. But yes, there wasn't intent. So there's a number of entities who chase grants for cities and were really pushing us hard, and we we just said, that is fantastic, but we don't have the staff time to do it. And they said, okay, we're going to apply for a grant on your behalf, and we'll just let you know. And uh essentially on our behalf in the sense of to put E V charging stations somewhere in the city. Um but it they were requesting us to identify locations and you know, electricity uh potential, and we we just didn't, we we did not have the staff time to to do all that. So we have we have put that on the back burner.
I think we were just considering the our our limited staff capacity also. We we were all we're also considering what the private sector might be potentially bringing in. And we had an active conditional use permit application for one of our um our gas stations here in town to add, I think, like six chargers and and there were just some comments we sent back and and then and then it kind of just went silent. So but there and their presentation to us was like, you know, this is happening around the country right now. Gas stations are converting to E V charging. So
Yeah.
we were also kind of saying maybe we need to take a step back and understand what our role should be here also and just evaluate that before before moving forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I also have a few questions.
Go ahead.
But I think that's beat me too.
Um I I want to bring up the trash at um at Ski Droid. I'm just for the question. For for such a temporary use permit, is the onus on the organization to handle their own trash, or is the is all that fault of the city? Because it really struck me as beyond, I mean, it was off the charts. It really struck me as beyond the street department's capacity. And you know, the Race Series partners with C four um who brings out an army of volunteers, which was what was really needed, an army of volunteers in the moment to all.
Yep. So the answer is both. So uh both entities worked on trash. So I know that the uh ra- the um promoter had people working to empty the trash. There was a um they had people, we had people. And I think, you know, this was one where I think the number of people who showed up uh exceeded our expectations, but both. So going forward, what it's going to end up being is uh if you if you don't have the capacity to do it yourself, the city will do it. But we will um for for profit organizations charge you back for it. You know, for nonprofit, we need to partner, and if they've got, if they they need additional volunteers or or they need to pull additional people in. I mean, I think these are all considerations. It's it's tough because I talked to Mr. Counsel on the phone today and you know, we're all kind of shaking our heads like, would we get ten thousand people next year if it's snowing sideways? And I think his answer was, well, I think going forward, we will prepare for those for that capacity. And so I think he's definitely willing to prepare for a higher capacity in coming years with trash and um porta potties.
So the the trash wasn't the only capacity issue, and um so I had two friends visiting for the event, and it was they're very professional and put on their own events. And so it's kind of interesting to see the event through their eyes. And I mean, even just the capacity on Harrison's side box was, I don't see how anybody could have taken out the trash, actually.
Yeah.
Because there was no way you could even walk up and down the street.
Yeah.
Um yeah, uh so that uh they're suggest, I mean, everybody agrees that it's just magical and wonderful to have it right in the middle of town. But if that's going to be the capacity going forward, then maybe it's time to think about doing it where somebody could see it because they couldn't see anything.
Yeah.
Um.
Uh and actually, Mr. Counsel and I had a long discussion today about potential changes for next year and how to both both i- i- improve some of the revenue for that organization, but also you know, like this, it's sort of a weird time, right? It starts at noon and it goes till like four or five. And so we talked about, you know, like, yes, you can't really get to the trash cans during it. Do we do an evening pickup and then a morning kind of like clutch up? Do we uh put out bleachers in different areas and say, you know, like, here's that, you know, for a price, you can get an elevated view without like standing on some concrete structure.
That was one of my friends' uh suggestions, was on the uphill side, on the east side.
Yeah.
Um bleachers would allow people to see because there were there were little kids there. They wouldn't even see when they're on there.
Right.
Twelve people thick.
Yeah.
You know, and uh it would allow you to see up and down the course, which you can't either. You can only see pretty much right in front.
So so I mean, I think already, like, that man's mind is always churning and being like, what can we do better? What can we, you know, like, how might we improve this or that? But like, the city administrator said, we, I I think it was just sort of a perfect storm of incredibly beautiful weather, and if you look at Adam Ducharme's data that she'll send out, you can see from last year to this year, like, the draw, I mean, most of the people there are from the front range. But the nationwide draw was tremendously larger than
Cell phone data?
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
Well, that's all.
Creepy cell phone data, ninety data. So fascinating.
Um that's all we're going to hear. Thanks.
All right. Uh Christian.
Yeah, um uh first one, I guess, to pivot uh that same conversation more to us. I think we need to seriously consider our long term planning uh in terms of parking. Uh that was just insanely ridiculous for the winter time uh to an extent that I don't think any of our community members, while maybe not necessarily as upset um as they would be for the race series, uh but definitely still uh upset at the fact that there was literally no parking all the way to the woods on the east side. Uh and I imagine the west side felt pretty similar, and that's only really ever precedent during boom days. Even then, I don't feel like it was that nearly like that. Um it still felt like it was a lot more. So um while I understand this could be a freak one off, um it's also reasonable for us, uh much like the organizer, to start considering our long term plans for parking and parking solutions. Um not just including proper signage to parking, uh available parking, but uh expanding on parking and potentially considering things like parking garages or ways to add parking capacity. I I just, I think these are ways that could potentially even be revenue bringers to the city directly without having to rely on a sales tax. So I think it'd be it'd be wild for us to not see this as potentially going to continue to happen in the future, given climate change, uh making that time of year especially a lot more. Um well, I guess, pretty for us, and not for the climate, but it definitely is a lot more enjoyable in terms of weather for human beings and uh being in Leadville specifically. I mean, we all saw how it went. Um but um in general, I feel like that's going to be the common trend, and we should plan for that. And I would like to see us geared towards that. I know that I, you know, none of us individually can make that uh change or difference necessarily or bring that any plans to the forefront, but I would ask staff to kind of heavily consider that uh for future events and just for the future of the city itself. Um given the direction it seems to be that we're heading in. Um not really as much of a question as a comment, but my second one is more of a question along the lines of sustainable waste management. Uh I heard a lot of complaints about this waste management, not just from trash, but also the horses and humans' waste um and being able to properly manage that. Um I know that during this time of year, usually that's not more specifically a big concern, given uh normally it's snowing and it's not as big and permanent, but it definitely felt that way for a lot of people um who uh talked to me and had issues with that. I I'm not too concerned as that as I am generally speaking of having some better system of waste management. It sounds like maybe that's something that's already in the works with our new permitting system, but I just kind of wanted to get a good idea as to, you know, when requiring waste management, uh are we going to develop a system that kind of goes same uh like any other system based off the anticipated um people, what type of waste management are they doing? Um and if they need support, where are they even getting that from? Because I'm sorry, but I don't think even the city would have had capacity to do anything in terms of waste management uh without proper notice um and us hiring our own waste management team to subsize it. But that, to me, seems like it'd be a bit unfair. Um and it it just feels to me like that needs to be part of the uh permitting process if it's not already. But I'm not sure if it is. So that's my question.
Yeah, yeah, obviously. So the the impact that the events bring to our community needs to be managed by the applicant. And so we're you know, we're changing that structure because by default, the city just took up that slack. And what we're finding is that was fine when our events were a lot smaller. Right? And what we're finding with the race series and with some of our events is we're a victim of our own success. I mean, it's actually, you know, let's reflect on it for a moment. We had such success this weekend that the impacts were unanticipated. And you know, if you look at a lot of resort towns, uh the mayor and I have talked about this, a lot of resort towns last year, their sales tax was down eight percent, ten percent. So for us to see large numbers is is a good thing. Um the question always is, how do we manage it? And I think that that is how we're trying to improve the structure and function of the city is revising our temporary use permit process to make it clear what the obligations of the applicant are versus the obligations of the city. And I think each application is going to have to, you know, that's why we have a public hearing on it. I think that's why we need to sit down with the applicant. And you know, a lot of our applicants have been amenable to more porta potties, more, you know, more volunteers covering things. And so each one's different. You know, I think uh this this event has demonstrated the need for all the things identified. Parking, um you know, waste and uh uh you know, handling whether it's the the porta potty waste or the trash. So I I think these are all issues we can deal with with the applicant leading up to the application coming before the city council, because we're going to know the issues as well as you. Hopefully, we'll have worked out conclusions so that you'll see in the application how the applicant has uh agreed to address the issues. And uh if there are other issues, let me know, and we can make sure they get addressed in that. I I mean, I have some ideas about the parking uh which I can, you know, we can share as we get further down the road and we can, but you know, I think we also need to remember, we just passed a strategic plan with all the things we said we were going to focus on. And I want to make sure if we're going to change it. So one of my ideas for your next city administrator's report is I'm going to have the list of all the things that we're trying to work on and which ones are a strategic plan identified and, you know, kind of how we manage the list. Um because I think these are all fair questions. You know, do we want more E V charging stations? How are we going to manage parking? How do we manage our events? And I think we just need to balance how we prioritize which ones we're going to um take on.
But my only qualm with this whole strategic plan is that our strategic plan was very exclusive in who got to participate. Um we saw a lot of business owners and a lot of nonprofits at that strategic plan. We did not see a lot of uh everyday people who utilized their streets who would have brought something like this up as a priority, as we clearly have seen with Lifetime, time and time again, the fact that that like was mentioned at that meeting, but only from the business point of view, I think clearly demonstrates that, like, that I'm sorry, but that strategic plan was not up to par when it comes to uh people interaction and our community interaction. And to me, I I I understand that we want a strategic plan, but when we consider the fact that we have something like the one community project going on and their intense success in getting community feedback, and we compare that in contrast to our own strategic plan, it just seems like we're like it's like a little baby's toy.
It's okay. I mean, I I don't want to rush things along, but our next presenter just said that she needs to hop off soon, so I don't want to cut too much into her time. I I don't think it's a either or thing. I think one of the ideas I have is coming to the city council with kind of a list. And we identify the ones that come under the strategic plan, and we can decide, I just want to make sure we're we're focusing on the priorities that we still think are important.
Sure, I agree. I just don't feel like that was done in an appropriate way.
First fan cake, Christian. It's a living document. We can take control and change things going along if we need to. All right, uh other final questions, so we can uh value Ms. Hathaway's time for her presentation.
Uh I have more, but I'll save them for an email. I do ask that they do get addressed in a public session, or I can address them during my public comment during that session.
Okay. Thank you. I want to jump ahead then um to our hot off the presses Hazard Mitigation Plan and a presentation by our Hathaway.
Good evening, Mayor. Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council staff. Thank you all for having me tonight. I'm thank you for your flexibility on the time. I really value the discussion you guys are having, especially when it comes to special events and how we move forward to create a safer community. So thank you so much for letting me present tonight on the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which I think ties into a lot of what I'm hearing tonight, both in public comment and from this session as well. Um so I have a presentation. I can either share my screen, or I don't know, Sarah, if you wanted to pull it up.
Either. I got it. In my normal.
I can share mine too, if I have permission. Neither one is.
You have permission, but I also have it ready for you. So I give me just one moment.
Cool.
Yes. There we are.
Awesome. Um so I'm really am excited, as you know, Mayor said, hot off the presses, twenty twenty five Leadville Lake County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Um so this is a project that I've been working on since twenty twenty two, as we'll talk about. Um so I'm really excited to bring it to you all tonight. And Sarah, if you want to go to the next slide. So a little bit about what a hazard mitigation plan is. This in depth document looks at our county strategies for minimizing risk from natural disasters. So while we have plans that look at how we respond to all sorts of disasters from active shooter to cybersecurity, this plan specifically looks at how we're impacted by natural disasters such as wildfire, earthquake, tornadoes, et cetera. Um it also looks at how we want to strengthen our community's resistance um and maintain eligibility for federal mitigation funding where it exists moving forwards. Um this plan has a five year lifecycle, um so we update them per FEMA standards every five years just to make sure that we're acknowledging our changing risks, um celebrating our successes in mitigation and planning for the next five years of mitigation projects. There are some legal authorities related to this plan. The first is the Disaster Mitigation Act, uh which just mandates that local jurisdictions, both city and county, um and also towns and other cities, bigger cities as well, um have a hazard mitigation plan, and that makes us eligible for things like hazard mitigation assistance grants. Uh there is a FEMA compliance section, um and that requires what goes into an H M P. So everything you see in this hefty three hundred page document um is what FEMA asks that we include. So that includes the risk assessments, our mitigation strategies, and also levels of public involvement as well. Um and this allows us to apply for other federal grants. Um and then finally, the National Flood Insurance Program. Um this is a requirement of that. Both the city and county participate in this, and that allows residents that live in floodplains um to get low cost flood insurance. So Sarah, next slide. Thank you. So Sarah, next slide, thank you. A little bit of the history of the project. As I said, we've been working on this for a really long time. So back in two thousand and twenty-two, I came to city council to ask that um you all participate in this plan and be a partner with the county on this. You all agreed, which was really exciting to have a whole community-informed plan. We also received letters of intent to participate from Leadville Lake County Fire Rescue, the Leadville Police Department, Lake County Sheriff's Office, Friends of Twin Lakes, the school district. Um, and Parkville Water, to name a few. Um, so we were able to apply for the Hazard Mitigation Planning Grant, which we were awarded in twenty twenty-three. This was a really unique opportunity. Usually these FEMA grants are seventy-five, twenty-five match. This one was a ninety-ten match. So we received for an award for this one. For fifty-five thousand dollars, the federal share of that was just over forty-nine thousand, um, and the local share was just over five thousand. Um, and that could be met either cash or in kind. In speaking with our contractor, it looks like we've met that in kind. I'll be meeting with the state mitigation team in the next few weeks as we close out the grant to review that. But it was really great to be able to meet all of that in kind staff time. So we put out an RFP in um August of twenty twenty-three, um, and for a contractor to lead this process. This plan is extremely technical, um, and it requires knowledge of um FEMA requirements for the plan as well as scientific knowledge in terms of looking at the natural hazard profiles. So we awarded that contract to Synergy Disaster Recovery and worked with Mike Garner over there. He's done a lot of different plans in counties in Wyoming. Um, and then also he just submitted Pueblo Counties as well. So really familiar with Colorado, um, and Synergy also worked on the State Hazard Mitigation Plan. So we kicked off planning in September of twenty twenty-three with our first planning committee workshop. That was a large stakeholder group comprised of elected officials. Um, department heads, community members, um, and we did three of those total. And where we reviewed mitigation strategies, risk assessments, and then also came together on what hazards we wanted to highlight. Um, we also did something a little bit unique with a small planning committee where we brought in department heads. Mayor, thank you so much for attending that. To really look at a jurisdictional profiles for both city and county and make sure that we were capturing that in a whole community-informed manner. Um, and then we also conducted a lot of community outreach on this plan. Um, so at the bottom of the plan is the community survey that we sent out. Um, Lake County and the city of Leadville, we did that survey in English and Spanish, which was not common at the time for these plans. Uh, we did receive Spanish responses, um, and we were able to really connect with some community members in that way. Especially when how we worked through defining hazard mitigation in a language accessible way. So after all that, um, we sent it to the state for review. Um, they signed off on it, sent it to FEMA for review. FEMA approved the plan, sent it back to us. And the county adopted it through resolution twenty twenty-five uh dash zero seven the other week. And then I'll be asking the city to adopt it as well. Um, the city administrator is drafting a resolution for you all um to meet that. Requirement that the city have a hazard mitigation plan um and maintain that eligibility for federal funding. So any questions on um just the history of the project or the authorities before I dump jump into the plan? All right, Sarah, next slide. So this slide is really trying to condense this three hundred page plan into a few bullet points. Um, really outlined what our mitigation goals are. And the one thing I heard throughout this process is that we have a very strong community wildlife protection plan, a CWPP. That was adopted in twenty twenty-two. And this community wants to see the goals in that CWPP reached in terms of fire mitigation. Um, outside of fire mitigation, this plan also prioritizes protecting our infrastructure, um, reducing the impacts of any natural hazard. And really fostering those private and public partnerships, whether that's county and nonprofit, city and nonprofit, or our private partners um in the business sector. It also highlights what we've achieved since twenty nineteen. Um, so some of the projects that we accomplished is that we've installed backup power generators, the newest one being up at Public Works that was grant-funded by the Homeland Security Grant. Uh, we've replaced a few different culverts, especially over on five A that was washed out earlier this year. Uh, we've accomplished a lot of fire mitigation, whether that's what the Forest Service has done up by Turquoise Lake. Um, our partners at the Arkansas River Watershed Collaborative have been working on interlock and restoration and we brought um. Team Rubicon up this past summer to work on County Route Seventeen. And then we've done a lot of public outreach as well. Um, I'm always impressed on how this community wants to learn how to be more disaster resilient. So fire had their town halls last summer. Um, I've done some tabling at boom days to get people signed up for Lake County emergency alerts. Um, we had a lot of public outreach events over the past five years. So what do we decide for twenty twenty-five and moving forward? Uh, we listed out seventeen projects in the plan. Uh, most of them continued off of the success we've had the last few years. So continuing that culvert replacement schedule that Public Works has developed. Uh, we wanna see increased capacity for public charging areas during large power outages or other like wildfire evacuations. And that's just not phones. Um, that's like medical equipment charging as well if you're on an oxygen machine. Um, again, that wildfire wildfire prevention, uh, carrying out that community wildfire protection plan. And then also something that maybe is a little different than we've done in the past, but an earthquake risk assessment, looking at a historic building specifically. So in maintenance and compliance, this is a plan that lives in my office, the Office of Emergency Management. Um, and will be, my deputy and I will be working on implementing these projects, seeking out grant funding opportunities where they exist. And seeing what we can do to support our partners um that want to continue out the projects that fall in their area. Um, I talked a little bit about engagement of this plan earlier. We did the bilingual community survey. Um, we had workshops and town halls on this, so. Two things that we did, or sorry, one thing that we did was that was unique, was doing the two drop-in town halls. We had one at City Hall and one at the Southern Fire Station. Where people could come in, um, we had Spanish interpretation available. And they could ask questions about the plan or really any mitigation question at all. So I had the projects laid out on poster board. And then also the vulnerability table as well, and they could just come in and learn about it. Um, so that was unique. That was something our contractor hadn't seen done before, and the idea was to really just meet people where they were at and. Not really focus the conversation around the plan, but what they cared about and what mitigation actions they wanted to see in the community. So the last part of it is that updated vulnerability table. Um, that's a comprehensive all hazard review, so we looked at. All the different natural hazards, we really dove into each one of them, um, the history of them in Lake County. Um, we did them for the city and county and that table is based off of likelihood and consequence. So I'll show you that table on the next slide. So this table breaks out the natural hazard, how it affects the county and how it affects the city. Um, our top three ones, I don't think are much of a surprise, pandemic, severe winter weather and wildfire. Um, but you can kind of see what the likelihood and the consequence of these would be. So for avalanche, it's moderate. We know it's gonna happen in Lake County. Where the avalanche paths usually are may not affect or have a large-scale disaster consequence. Uh, but I think, Sarah, if you wanna flip one more slide, that's really all I have in this time. I'm happy to answer any questions about the plan. Um, and as I said, the city administrator is drafting a resolution for your all's consent agenda next meeting, I believe.
Wow, thank you very much, Ms. Hathaway. Does anyone have any questions for our? Office of Emergency Management Director?
Great job condensing three hundred pages.
I try, I know, every time I come to, every time I come to you all, I'm like, I have to talk really fast, cause it's a lot of information very quickly.
Every three hundred page report could be condensed.
Definitely excuse you from having to read it.
I'm just curious, um, I appreciate the exhaustive process, but. Five-year cycle doesn't, that mean you barely get to rest before you have to go through that process again?
I very much agree with you. Um, 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 I would really like to see these plans have a larger life cycle, especially, I think, with the. Grant funding status, um. And you saw we applied for that grant in twenty twenty-two and we got that maybe in June of twenty twenty-three. Um, it took us a really long time to get that grant and a lot of that was just me waiting. Um, I would love for these plans to have a larger life cycle, um, but that is. Above me, unfortunately.
Well, excellent. Uh, any final questions from Ms. Hathaway? Thank you very much and congratulations.
No, thank you all and thank you for having me. I'm really sorry about my time constraints tonight, but I appreciate the time. Um, and the really great discussion I heard here tonight. So please, if any of you would like to meet individually about the. The plan and kind of go through those three hundred pages and look at the projects together, absolutely, we'd love to sit down with you um and look forward to working with you all and accomplishing them.
Thank you. Um, I have a question for the city administrator. If you're still on, boy.
Yep, I'm here.
I'm just wondering if if it's possible, I know we kind of like cut Councilmember Una Lial off because Claire had this time constraint. Would you mind if we pop back to catch the remainder of his questions regarding that your report?
That would be fine with me.
Great.
I'm sorry. We can punch too.
I I did have one regarding tags. I uh felt like it might be more appropriate to send an email after thinking that anyways, since I'd like to. Give an opportunity for a chief to kind of hear the question as well, but. I I guess so it doesn't catch you by surprise. I have heard a lot of complaints um that were only exacerbated during this um. Event cycle about uh the consistency of tagging, I guess. Um, just really some concerns about. Vehicle tagging, sorry, yeah, let me, sorry, thanks for clarifying that. Um, vehicles, certain vehicles being tagged and others not, even though they both have the same problem literally right next to each other. And officers consistently skipping over vehicles that seem to need to be tagged. Um, I I guess what sounds like to me is maybe it'd be good for us to kind of review that. With the community as to like the vehicle tagging, um. Were locals being tagged? Yeah, um, but this is a consistent issue uh throughout the year with specifically like. Parking related to snow removal and such, which is like what we're supposed to do, but more so just the inconsistency of some vehicles being tagged. And others not, even though they've literally been next to each other for the.
Yeah, so this, these would be like, so these these small, like, very specific detailed issues, probably best. To to raise directly with the chief if you have the specific details and then. He can say, you know, in this particular case, this is why we did X and Y, um.
Yeah, no doubt.
I I do think you know that we're trying to up our efforts um about abandoned vehicles and about vehicles that aren't being moved. In order to help our streets department move the snow. As a policy, I don't know about the specifics of these particular ones, but I think if we need to. I'm happy to facilitate a meeting with the chief to find out what exactly these were and and help figure out why ones were tagged and others weren't.
No, I I as I mentioned, I'm personally not as concerned about the specifics of some community members certainly are. I think more importantly. It is just the communication between us. And the community members, not just at the point of tagging, but like proactively going out to the community and making this a big stunk that this is happening. And being very vocal about it. Um, felt like the appropriate thing, but I'm not sure where that lands, which is why it's more of a question of like, is that something that's possible for us to do or?
Yeah, and you know, we're trying to increase our transparency. And so these are things that we, you know, the reason we've updated our website, the reason we started a newsletter is to push out this information. So absolutely perfect place to bring it up to say, hey, this is something that we can get the word out better about. And then that's, you can even, um, you know, shoot me an email and say, hey, here's an idea for the newsletter. We are um coming up with some ideas to push the newsletter out further. As a way, you know, because you know what we used to do for this communication about streets is we used to just. Come up with a brochure and mail it to everybody in town, which is a very, I think, dated way to try and communicate with our community. So we've tried to find the other avenues to get that information out and. So um, I think that's fantastic and a fantastic idea that I will propose that we include in one of our next newsletters is. You know, the code requirement that vehicles be moved with a certain number of days and making sure people are aware of that. So. Those are great topics to bring up for the newsletter.
No, thank you. I just, that that's less of a direct concern I had, um. Regarding to the event, but I heard that especially during the event, there's some issues uh specifically with. With that, and I can email you the rest uh directly so that. Give an opportunity for a proper response, given that the police chief isn't here to kind of.
Yeah, and and his apologies, uh, he was planning to be at the meeting tonight, but there are a number of vehicle accidents, and so he's out on calls tonight.
It's only fair he didn't have a report anyways.
I was thrilled to see all the ticketing they were doing this weekend. I mean, there were people. Parking anyways that were just so ridiculous and I saw them all.
They even had the announcer a couple times, like, if this is your vehicle. Yeah, and you know, these are the issues that that, uh, you know, we we can't. I I would say there isn't a solving. These are just the issues we're always gonna have to be working at, you you know, and I think. These are all avenues that I think are 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 great ideas for continuing to to chip away at it, but. You know, I do think if if people are clear that if they're gonna come to ski drawing. And they're gonna park in crazy places, they'll be ticketed. I also think there's a, there's an obligation for us to to look at, you know, providing some type of parking, you know. Um, that that would, that would be fair if we're gonna expect these types of crowds. You know, the other flip side of that is, you know, sometimes things. You know, people are like, I'm not going to that next year, it's too crowded, you know, and so hopefully we don't. Get the flip side next year, which is we don't get enough people, so you you never know. Um, but I think planning is always something we're. We're working towards being better at.
Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to surprise you with that. I just, I didn't wanna lose. Let's take some action. Um, the first two things on our action items are both public hearings and so. Um, I'm gonna try to lump them together as I often do. So, good evening. My name is Dana Green and I am the mayor of the city of Leadville. Um, we have two public hearings before us this evening. The first is um the first reading of ordinance one, series of twenty twenty-five. An ordinance approving a development agreement with FelCrest Incorporated regarding proposed development. At two twenty East Eleventh Street. The applicant here is FelCrest Inc. This is a little unusual, cause it's the first reading, but due to the developer's timeline, uh, the first reading has to be the public hearing. Um, so that's why we're we're a little bit different than how we would normally do this. Our second, um. Public hearing is uh to consider a minor subdivision application by Chris and Michelle Hofer at the property known. As North Leadville Edition Block Sixty, Lot Nine B. When each public hearing is opened, I will first attend to some preliminary housekeeping matters. I will then ask for staff to discuss the highlights of the staff report, followed by the applicant to make a brief presentation of their proposals. Followed by public comments from members of the public in in attendance. The applicant will then have an opportunity for rebuttal, which is the applicant's opportunity to respond to any comments made by members of the public. After rebuttal, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And once the public comment portion of the hearing is closed. We will not accept public comments unless it is in response to questions posed by the council with the applicant and city staff. The staff will then have an opportunity for clarification and rebuttal, which is staff's opportunity to respond to any comments. Made by the applicant or members of the public. Council members will then have an opportunity to ask questions of staff and the applicant. And at the conclusion of our questioning, the council will deliberate and render a decision, which could include a continuation of the hearing. Uh, the uh, the public hearings are, uh, or the second public hearing is quasi-judicial. Which means that we have to follow certain procedural requirements to establish a record. For this reason, it is important that when you speak, you identify yourself and state your physical address. If you would like to submit written materials, please understand that the city will have to hold on to these materials for at least thirty days. After city council renders its decision. We will hear each of, we will open each public hearing in sequence and close them, so we'll we'll deal with them separately, just one after the other. Are there any questions about our procedure this evening? Okay, uh, in that case, I will open the public hearing for. The first reading of ordinance one, series of twenty twenty-five, an ordinance approving a development agreement with FelCrest Incorporated regarding a. Proposed development at two twenty East Eleventh Street, applicant FelCrest Incorporated. Um, staff, just because of the highlights on that one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council for record. My name is Jake Washant. I'm the director of the Community Development Department for the city of Leadville. Uh, Mayor and Council, this ordinance approved tonight on the first reading would authorize. Uh, city to enter into an development agreement with the applicant FelCrest Inc. The ordinance that will exempt the property from the density limitation of nineteen long-hitch breaker in the R two zone. property from the density limitation of nineteen dwelling units per acre in the R two zone. Um, and it would increase the allowed net segmentation to forty two dwelling units per acre, uh so the applicant can uh construct a four unit multifamily building that's proposed to be eighty percent, I'm sorry, deed restricted to eighty percent area median income uh or AMI. And so and so in exchange, the city would um get that deed restriction. Uh, there's a bit of background on this uh property, so just kind of explain what's kind of happened with this property for the course of the past uh ten or eleven years. Um, city council, um I believe initially saw this in two thousand fourteen as a conditional use permit and uh that was for a, also for a four unit building, four unit project on this, on this vacant site. The uh density limitation of nineteen dwelling units per acre was not evaluated at that time. Uh, so it was essentially overlooked, and so the conditional use permit was approved. And there there still would have been a site uh site plan that was required, but um that conditional use permit had a two-year expiration. That would have been um valid until two thousand eighteen, uh sorry, until two thousand sixteen. City council did extend that to two thousand eighteen. But um the project was not constructed, so the CUP ultimately expired. There have been two ordinances that have um passed in uh twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four respectively that affect this project. Uh, the first would have been ordinance that you passed uh twenty three. Um, it's on the table of uses ordinances and it made thousands of changes to the code. One of the changes was that it offer as four unit developments such as this to be a bio-rep use, so no longer requiring a conditional use permit. Uh, the other ordinance is an ordinance you passed last year in twenty twenty four that authorized the city to enter into development agreements. So this is the first application that the city has received under that newly authorized ordinance that allows development agreements. I'll uh pull up the site plan of the property um just so the council can see what is proposed. Uh, so this is a conceptual rendering uh showing these four units on uh this property located at two twenty East Eleventh Street. Since the council uh saw this in uh work sessions, um there was a, there was a presentation in twenty four, in twenty twenty four that the applicant gave to city council, and then um the applicant also had a work session in twenty twenty four. Um, and and so the last time that you saw this at the work session, this was proposed as a six unit development at a hundred and twenty percent AMI. So since that time, the applicant uh for a variety of reasons has reduced the scope of work to four units, thus proposing that eighty percent AMI deed restriction. Uh, so just recently, uh last week, the Planning and Zoning Commission um conducted a courtesy review of this project. And again, this is four units at eighty percent AMI. Uh, so that would be a development density of forty two dwelling units per acre um calculated on um per lot basis. Uh, the the administrative site plan was submitted concurrently with this development agreement application. Uh, so I reviewed that with P and Z. Um, I think P and Z did not have any concerns, so that was approved. The the administrative site plan was approved by me last week with conditions of approval. Those are included in your packet. One of the conditions is that they get a development agreement approved for the density. Uh, and then the other condition of approval was regarding the alley um that is part of the former alley that is part of the property, and I'll explain that here. On the screen is a survey of the property provided by the applicant um and consistent with other surveys that I've seen, two other surveys that I've seen that include this for for projects in the area. Uh, this vacated fifteen foot alley here that is shown uh which is a part of the property, that that is also shown as vacated on on other surveys that that I have found. So in other words, the property includes lot two twenty, which is that historically platted twenty five foot wide lot, and then a vacated fifteen foot alley. Uh, so the condition of approval that is included with the administrative site plan application is that we get more information on the document that that vacated that alley. So at this time, I do not have, and the survey does not reference, as you can see on the screen, um the title report does not reference any uh document that vacated that alley. That would have had to most likely have been done by city ordinance. Do you have a question?
What does vacated mean?
Sorry, thank you for the question. Um, vacated means that you're eliminating the alley. So an alley is is public right of way uh similar to um a street right of way. So it's the form of ownership, it's public ownership, which would be different than private property ownership. Um, so what you see on the screen, uh this rectangle here is fifteen foot wide by a hun- about a hundred and five feet um deep. Um, an alley right of way, so a city-owned property that was platted in the eighteen hundreds. Um, actually, I think this is the Cooper subdivision. So, yeah, I think the eighteen hundreds, but but never constructed as an alley. It's not paved. Uh, so there's a difference between it being used as an alley and and the creation of the public ownership of the alley. Um, so the survey, as you see on the screen, the draft survey is indicating that this was, this was vacated. Um, or it was turned back to private property ownership, so the title of that property um is uh is with the um the current property owner. Uh, but I don't have the document, I don't have the copy of the city ordinance that that shows that, and and that needs to be confirmed. Uh, in other words, we don't want to, um, we will, we we want to check that box before we approve developments. We want to ensure that that was properly vacated. Um, so like I said, I've seen this on two other surveys, so um so multiple surveyors are referencing the vacation of this alley uh formally at some point. Um, so I'm not concerned about that. We, but it's just, it's property diligence to make sure that we have a copy of that. So that is a condition of approval on the administrative site plan. So the uh the rest of the kind of the evaluation of the site plan is just um provided for, I'm just going to figure kind of contextual information in your packet. So that was the administrative site plan um and staff report that that I wrote that was provided to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, again, Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a courtesy review of the site plan, um did not have any concerns, and we'll go back to the go back to the image of the um concept wrong. So staff is recommending approval of this ordinance that would increase the density limitation to forty two dwelling units per acre in exchange for that deed restriction, eighty percent AMI for all four units. This is a first reading, so I recommend that you um so maybe you schedule, if you approve this ordinance, I would recommend that you schedule uh a second reading for a date certain, recommend that be April first, uh so two meetings from now. In your packet, there are uh three documents that are related to this ordinance. So there's the ordinance itself, which references the development agreement, and the development agreement would be the document that the mayor signs to enter into the agreement with Felcrest. And then that development agreement includes an exhibit, which is the deed restriction, which would, which would be the kind of a third document in the series of documents that sets the AMI limitation. The Leadville County Regional Housing Authority is a party, would be a party to that agreement in addition to the the city and and Felcrest. And I have uh reached out to the Regional Housing Authority to request that this item be on on uh agenda for review so that the Regional Housing Authority has an opportunity to, opportunity to review the terms of the agreement. And uh so the the council is not approving um the exact verbiage of the deed restriction agreement tonight. You're just essentially approving it in a form, and that would be approved, yeah, to be approved by the city attorney and the Regional Housing Authority. Uh, there's a motion, uh suggested motion on page twenty nine of your packet, and I can take any questions.
No questions for Mr. LaChance?
Not a question, but I really want to thank the applicant for adjusting the AMI ceiling. Um, I remember uh speaking out pretty strongly against that at the uh work session, and that's um that's going to really benefit the community.
It's my, and um I won't say the applicant's letter, but I understand, it's my understanding that the applicant is applying for um for chapel funding and Colorado Housing Finance Authority funding. And so I think that AMI limitation aligns with uh the goals, the funding goals for the project also, Mayor.
Uh, do I have one question in terms of the deed restriction program itself, and I want to acknowledge that I wear both the Regional Housing Authority board member hat as well as city council hat. But um if the Regional Housing Authority, um which I would be excluding myself from voting on that uh board if this were to come up to it, but if the Regional Housing Authority uh were to vote and uh the vote were or they didn't feel like they were ready for this, what would the process be in terms of this whole project? Does this project fully rely on the Regional Housing Authority being successful, or is there some sort of downfall in terms of uh the agreement with the Regional Housing Authority being successful, or is there some sort of downfall for managing the deed restriction itself? Um, say, not of the applicant or um, anyone else could take that on.
It's a good question. So if I'm understanding you, part of that question, or at least the the second half of that question is if the Regional Housing Authority was was not able to enforce uh the deed restriction at some point in time, what would, what would be in place to ensure that the deed restriction is enforced? And I believe, and I, I can um I can look into this, I you know, either either now and and uh and then get back by the end of the meeting on this, look at the the language. I, when I, I talked about this with the city attorney uh over the past two weeks, and um we talked about a situation where we wanted to um, we would prefer that the Regional Housing Authority would enforce the deed restriction, but in the situation, the deed in in a situation where the Regional Housing Authority was not able to do that, then it would default to the city and to enforce the deed restriction. Um, and off the top of my head, I don't recall the exact language and which page number that is on in your packet, so I'll look at that, and for some reason that's not in there. That that's a question that I can look at with the city attorney and we're going to answer that prior to second reading.
Right.
I'll stop sharing, so it's easier to see.
Is that, is none of it part of the Felcrest?
Uh, yes.
Why don't, i- if there's, are there further questions for Mr. LaChance?
I have one, one more. Um, so just to clarify, the Regional Housing Authority, are they the ones who would work out the details of the deed restriction? Or are we, is that something we're gonna, we can talk about?
Um, I think simply put, you would be, you would be approving a development agreement to waive the density, and the deed restriction would be to include the eighty percent A- AMI limitation. And uh and then you would essentially be approving the deed restriction um in its form as an exhibit to the development agreement. The remainder uh the detailed language would um be on the eighty percent AMI limitation um would be the exact language would be up to the city attorney and and um the Regional Housing Authority. Uh, but there would not be, in other words, um the city attorney and the Regional Housing Authority could not pose, impose additional public benefits beyond eighty percent AMI that are not required by code. That would just be like the the um the essentially the legal language, not 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 additional terms and conditions. Um, so in other words, the Regional Housing Authority um like, you know, could not or should not say that um in addition to eighty percent AMI uh deed restriction, that um the prop, you know, all property owners must work, work at least thirty o- thirty hours a week in the county. That would be an additional term that would be on the scope of that review.
I see. Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Okay. If there are no further questions for Mr. LaChance, let's move on to uh the applicant's presentation, and I think Ms. Coddington, if there, if you wanted to add to some of the questions that were asked by council, that would be great.
Um, yeah, I'll turn it over to Victor to kick us off for the applicant presentation, but just in terms of compliance, I know it's outside of the perpetuity requirement in relationship to the development agreement, but I thought it might be worth um noting that as part of the financing through the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, the property will have to be um rented at below eighty percent AMI for at least the forty year term of the loan.
Okay, Mr. Christian.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Green, City Council, staff. Thank you for having us. Um, yeah, so I'm glad that we're, you know, finally getting this project moving forward. Um, I've had this lot for ten years now, and I'm glad I finally got to hook up with Chaffa to get us through this process. Um, so as you see, we've been trying to do four units. Um, I've always thought about doing affordable housing for the community. Um, it just, everything is just falling into place. Um, but yeah, I would welcome any questions that y'all have about the project.
Are there any questions for Mr. Christian or Ms. Coddington? No.
I don't have any questions, but I'm mutually excited, Victor.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you.
If I had like
Go ahead.
Uh, if I can just add, one of the things that we're really excited about with this project, um we myself and Tim Ryan and and a few others have been working on um conceptual plans for small-scale rural housing projects around the state for the past several years, and they're really hard to get done. This is our second project that we've worked on in Leadville. And after going through this process for a long time, Chaffa has stepped up with a pilot program that is offering both low-cost debt financing as well as equity into the project to find a pathway to move it forward. And so this is the very first project to go through. Um, and we're super excited to have it be in Leadville and um to see this this come out of the ground, so could not be more excited about the project and just wanted to share that with you all tonight.
If this goes well, we need a hundred more of them.
Well, actually, we have an exact number. We need about two hundred and fourteen.
Well, we'll see what we can do.
Well, I guess one question I do have, I don't know who is best to answer it is, have you been in touch with the Regional Housing Authority yet? Is, and is that even on the Regional Housing Authority's radar yet?
It is as of today.
Oh, we did. We did get an email from Chapin, and I believe we'll probably have that on the uh agenda for the March nineteenth regular meeting of the Housing Authority.
Awesome.
Chapin, if you wanna, have you been in touch with Jackie?
No, I was uh reaching out to board members uh just understanding that there's been some adjustments with the Regional Housing Authority. I thought that most appropriate, but if you have, as a Regional Housing Authority members, if you have better direction on on uh what needs to be done before that three nineteen meeting, do please let me know. Thank you.
I, I've been working with Jackie on agendas. Um, so I've continued to do that and make sure that she knows that this is on, should be on the next um, on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you. We'll be prepared to to be at that meeting and um have information for the packet we prior.
If there are no further questions for the applicant, then I would like to open the public comment portion of this public hearing. Uh, is there anyone in chambers who would like to public comment on this particular ordinance and the development agreement? Please.
Oh, I'm Steve Fasch, and I'm very thrilled with something like this going through, and hopefully that number of two hundred and fourteen will be realized.
Thank you. Is there anyone online who would give, who would like to give public comment uh on this particular ordinance or uh the development agreement itself? Raise your virtual hand. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public comment portion of this public hearing.
Best move to clo- close the public comment portion of this public hearing. Luna, eleven seconds.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, are there further discussions, questions for staff?
I did just take a quick look at the deed restriction, and I do not see anything in there right now where it says that in a situation where the Regional Housing Authority was not able to enforce it, it would default to the city. I think what I was thinking of was the um the first writing refusal. We didn't break into there, but um so I will uh work with the city attorney to address that and uh and bring that back um for a second reading, and I'll have an update for you on that at uh at second reading.
Okay, but that's uh something that we can improve without needing to worry about it at this moment, uh just as long as it's updated in the second reading?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Other clarification, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Councilmember Luna Levins to adopt ordinance number one, series of twenty twenty five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Leadville approving a development agreement with uh Felcrest Inc. uh pursuant to chapter seventeen point nine four of the Leadville Municipal Code on first reading. I further move to schedule the second reading of this ordinance uh for regular city council meeting of April first, twenty twenty five.
Best seconds.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tenth Dark?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Lev?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Accent.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas? Accent. Councilmember Thomas, absent. Councilman Hill.
Yes.
Great. Okay, this public hearing is closed. Congratulations. Yes, let's, it was so much fun. Let's do it again. Uh, at this point, I would like to uh, open the public hearing. For North Leadville Edition Block sixty, Lot nine B Minor Subdivision, applicants Chris and Michelle Hoffer. Uh, at this time, this is a quasi judicial hearing, so I would like to ask the city council members to disclose any ex parte communication. Or conflict of interest with the applicants. I have none. Okay, hearing none, let's move on and ask the staff to present the highlights.
Mayor, council, I believe this is very straightforward, so I'll try to be as brief as possible, but this is a proposal to subdivide existing seventy five foot wide lot. Here in town on the east side and two lots, so subdividing that right down the middle. Uh, there's a bit of history with this subdivision on this property. This was originally platted in the eighteen hundreds as three twenty five foot wide lots. I'll put that on the screen. And uh, then more recently in twenty twenty two, a property owner consolidated two of the lots. And then in twenty twenty four, another property owner purchased all three lots and consolidated them. And then the current property owner um, now is proposing to subdivide that into uh, into two lots. Um, so there you can see the twenty twenty two subdivision on the screen. And then a different property owner with the twenty twenty four lot consolidation. And then um, on the screen now is the, is the current proposal. Planning his own commission held a public hearing on this last week and unanimously recommended approval. With the findings and conditions that are included in your packet. And your staff report also includes my staff report to the planning zone commission, which evaluates the code criteria. Um, and um, the conditions of approval do include the dedication of, I'm sorry, the um, the fee in lieu paid to the school district. Um, in lieu of providing land dedication, that's a requirement of the subdivision code. And I can take any questions.
Other questions for Mr. Lashance? I have just questions about, you know, could you tell us a little bit more about the land dedication or fee in lieu payment to the school district? Like, how does, I don't think we've, we've heard very much about this occurring before.
Yeah, sure. Uh, you, see, the la- the last time you approved this, I think was a similar project. With a similar fee would have been about two meetings ago. It was actually the adjacent properties would have been um, the property just to the, just to the east of this. Um, I will uh, pull on the screen, um, open the screen, the section of the subdivision code um, that this comes from. But in twenty twenty two, there was an ordinance um, city council passed that says that either um, when anytime a uh. A property owner is subdividing, um, it it classifies, I think the term is a land development project. And where you're creating the potential for there to be new units on the property. So if you have an eighteen hundreds lot that's, that's twenty five foot wide and you're not modifying it and building a house, you would be subject to the fee. Um, but if you were, if you were building rallyards phase two, for example, and you're taking one lot and you're subdividing it into fifty lots. Each one of those lots would would could potentially be developed with a single family house or multifamily um, property. And it'd be subject to the, subject to the fee.
So the rationale behind that part of the code is just that because potentially you could have more, say, inhabitants there. You're assisting the school district with the potential increase in, you know, either. Attendees or just more people in the town.
Exactly. That's the logic is that you're increasing the potential to have additional impact on the school districts. Um, and which means that we need to have more land for schools, so the requirements to dedicate land, but then you have the option to pay a fee. In lieu of land dedication.
And that's a one, one time. Interesting. Thank you very much for that clarification.
I don't think it's necessary for me to pull the code section, but I do have it here if anybody has any questions on that.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Uh, there's a recommended motion on page sixty seven on your packet.
I'd like to move on now to uh, the applicant's presentation. I see that women have joined us this evening. Welcome.
Thank you very much and good evening, uh, council members, staff and uh, mayor. Thank you very much for having us. Um, really, our plan is to eliminate the process of continually subdividing this land. We wanna do it once and for all and finish and and build two homes here um, that are smaller and more consistent to what the neighboring lots are. So um, that is our ultimate goal. So thank you very much for looking at this with us.
Fantastic. Other questions for the applicants? Seeing none, I'd like to open the public comment portion of this public hearing. Is there anyone in chambers? I'm just gonna ask you, Steve, do you? Is there anyone online who would like to make comment on this application? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public comment portion of this public hearing.
Luna Land moves to close this public comment portion of this public hearing.
Third seconds. All in favor?
I.
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 You didn't? Okay. Let's uh, is is there any other questions, discussion, comments for staff or the applicant? From council?
Seems pretty sort of.
Just as Mr. Lashance promised, uh, in that case, I would entertain a motion.
Our move to approve the North Leadville Edition Block sixty, Lot nine B Minor Subdivision. P L twenty twenty four zero eight three located at six thirteen East Eleventh Street, along with the attached findings and conditions.
Best seconds.
Roll call, please.
Uh, council member Little Leo.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards, who's absent. Mayor Green?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tenth Dark.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas is also absent. Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. This public hearing is closed and congratulations. Thank you for bringing us a long history of subdivision and. And moderation to.
No more work on the subdivision. We're done. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Uh, now that brings us to our last action item. Um, this uh, was going to be a public hearing for certificate of appropriateness. Um, for the Homey Ak Schneider Residence Garage at one two one West Ninth Street. And we need to continue this um, uh, application to our next meeting. Therefore, I'm just gonna ask for a motion to continue it to our regular meeting on March eighteenth.
The Certification Preservation Committee continued their public hearing. They held a public hearing. And then uh, they decided they need to continue it for more discussion, and so we need to continue that council decision also.
Can't get ahead of the H B C. Have to finish their work.
Council member Luna Land moves to uh, continue the certification of appropriateness uh, for. Uh, Homey Ak Schneider Resident Garage at one two one West Ninth Street. To the uh, eighteenth meeting.
March eighteenth.
March eighteenth meeting.
Third seconds.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas, absent. Mayor Pro Tenth Dark.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Land.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards, absent. Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll just pick that one up again in two weeks and that'll be all you, Mayor Pro Tenth Dark. Sweet. All right, let's move on to uh, our bookended public comments. Please.
Steve Prestash, one thirty one East Third Street, um. Uh, an issue came up on uh, Saturday, uh. Um, during the event and um. I did talk to the sheriff about it. Um, I've had some interaction with the chief of the police before that. Um, I'd like to uh, get this thing moving along a little further. And I'll continue to work with the uh, law enforcement on this. Um, it has to do with um, animals left in vehicles. And I'd like to see, the end result, I'd like to see, one of the end results is that we formulate a policy. That um, when we have an event like this and the weather is so nice. That um, someone different from the announcer uh, come on and um, warn the public. About um, animals and vehicles. Um, but I'll talk about more of that in the future once I get a little bit prepared with it. And I was really pleased with the administrator's uh, comments. That the uh, litter glitter um, thing is going to be addressed. I think that was horrible. Um, I I I hope not to see any more confetti at that, at events. And all, and that there was a lot of community comments to me about that, negative. Um, personally, I don't like the candy being thrown out and I'm glad that's gonna not go away. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Is there anyone online who would like to give public comment at this, the end of our hearing? Seeing none, let's move on uh, to Mayor's report. Boy, it just seems like an awful lot has happened since our last meeting and I feel like I have a lot to talk about and it probably doesn't even cover everything. Um, one is that um, our administrative assistant, Bree Ortiz uh, reached out. Or 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 contacted Full Circle and their um, their youth uh, group. And these young people came and cleaned out our basement. And I know that we have not, you guys aren't down there a lot. Um, it 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 has just been the repository of generations of just things. I think that we didn't know what else to do with and it 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 is like a brand new, it is a brand new landscape down there. So they were tremendously helpful um, in doing something that I think we've always looked at and be like, yeah, I gotta, I gotta do something with that someday. And um, they did it. So I'm really grateful to them. We'll be sending them a little thank you note. Um, the second thing is that uh, the city administrator and I attended the Colorado Municipal League Legislative Update. Meeting down in Denver. Um, super interesting. We went to the Capitol and. You know, while the city administrator and the rest, uh, many of the other attendees got a nice welcome message from Speaker McCluskey. And got a tour of the Capitol. They took all the mayors and they just sort of like dropped us off on the Senate floor and left us there, which was really interesting. But um, rather unexpected. So I I've actually never been in the Capitol and uh, it was, yeah, can you believe it?
No.
It was really great. We went, then we went back to the meeting site at History Colorado and we got, uh, we had a number of meetings. One, you know, the longest one kind of going over the various legislative issues that our C M L lobbyists are following. It was pages. And so I know C M L, I think you guys get their legislative updates from time to time. This is the time of year, things are gonna get wrapped up in May, so it's just gonna be a whole host of issues. They're always keeping an eye on things that might uh, might affect um, municipalities. There uh, they, as they say, they always strive for partnership, not not preemption. Um, trying to maintain some local control over various things. So it was really fascinating. Um, and then, and then Laurie and I got stuck in this terrible snowstorm on the way back. We're stuck on the east side of the tunnel and we, and we uh, we got home at one thirty in the morning, so it was really a long day.
Where you're at.
Uh, yeah.
But we didn't, we didn't have to, uh, we did have some Pop-Tarts in the car, so.
Thanks. Laurie is like, is is she's ready for the apocalypse. We did not even get close to cannibalism. We were just eating Pop-Tarts and happy. Um, that was great. The, another thing is, uh, so yesterday, uh, there's just been so much uncertainty, both, especially about federal. Situation and federal funding, but also because our state is in a significant budget deficit. Um, Curly um, Sailor from Build a Generation and John Mercury got together. And had a big meeting of a lot of nonprofit leaders, the school district, the hospital, city, uh, county. Um, you know, pretty much anybody that may be, have some vulnerabilities or liabilities when it comes to federal funding or state funding. And met and went over what those are and literally what those number figures are. And it was, uh, it, for the city, like, we're great, right? Our biggest liability was the safer grant. And we, as uh, Chief McCann put it, we just dodged a bullet because they closed that out. We were able to arrange the budget to hire those three other firefighters, but other communities like Salida are in the middle of their safer grant. And that's, that funding is in doubt and so it's a really scary time for maintaining, say, your, your supply of firefighters. Um, so it was a really, it was both just a really sobering meeting. Um, when you hear about like, especially D H S and public health are heavily dependent on federal funding. The school district is heavily dependent on state funding, but also has some federal funds that they rely on. And so just, it it was both just really sobering, but also kind of comforting because we were just saying the part that. Everybody didn't really want to talk about out loud and kind of mapped out on the board. You know, sort of, you know, Maslow's hierarchy of needs of like, where does SNAP fund, you know, like, how much SNAP funding is potentially at risk? How much TAN of funding is potentially at risk? What about vaccines for children? You know, this is a Medicaid program that covers. Um, the childhood vaccinations for uh, kids on, on Medicaid and shit. So very informative. We're gonna have another meeting. There's a a lot. Uh, I think there's obviously the federal um, budget deadline that is coming up. We'll see. That is supposed to be March fourteenth. Um, that's when we will see if we go into a government shutdown again or not. Um, and then the state has an important meeting on the twentieth. So once we get a little kind of a clearer picture of maybe what is coming next down the pike. We'll meet again after March twentieth um, and take it from there. The ninety day federal funding pause, which may or may not be paused, depending on who you are and where you are. Is supposed to come to an end, I believe sometime in 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 April. Um, so that'll be another sort of benchmark for what we can expect coming forward. We heard that congressionally directed spending, um, while the applications are open, we're supposed to apply. But also not really necessarily count on anything being available. They just are 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 um, representation in, in Washington, just really doesn't even know if that. If those funds will uh, will survive some of these cuts. So um, there's a lot at stake, uh, but one thing that we fell back on in this meeting is. Is that, you know, thinking back to the last major crisis that we had, which was the pandemic, like. Leadville got it done and we formed a lot of community support. We were remarkable. We got national attention for the way that this community came together and supported the, the people and the groups that really needed it. And so we took a lot of comfort from that. We talked about different programs. We're gonna probably have to spin up again to um. To sustain this community, depending on what comes next. So we'll meet again. I'll keep you apprised. Um, but unfortunately, there's just a lot of unknowns right now. And my final, my final report is on the street lamps. Um, last year, we engaged with Colorado Lighting, the road uh, lighting engineers. Who did a remarkable job sort of restoring the power to many of our lights. They are working reasonably well. There are some that are just definitely not working. Um, and we have multiple vulnerabilities within our system that still remain. So um, I just submitted a C dot revitalizing main streets grant um, with the goal of replacing the luminaires, those things that sit on top of the streetlights. The bases around the bottom of the streetlights and the wiring within the poles. Um, so we'll see, they're supposed to, that's supposed to be decided mid-March. And uh, if that happens, we'll have to do some R F Ps for both the supply of the luminaires and the bases. And also the wiring work. So uh, we'll let you know on that too. And that is all I got. Well, that's all I'm gonna be willing to talk about. Uh, council boards.
Yeah, regional housing authority, we uh, voted in one new member of our two current open uh, community member vacancies. Yeah, Regional Housing Authority, we uh voted in one new member of our two current open uh community member vacancies. And that will be Tracy Fletcher, um, which many of you may know, but for those of you who don't. Um, she is uh someone who's been involved in affordable housing. For quite some time now, it sounds like, uh, all the way up to the governor's office, all the way down to the local level and in other communities such as Summit. Um, so. Uh, she has experienced grant writing, and she seemed like a really good fit in the gap that we had in. Uh, the Regional Housing Authority, so we all unanimously brought on. Uh, her, and we decided to continue to hear out um some more. Of the people who have submitted their applications to come and. Present to us in person to kind of get, get a feel as to what it is that they're offering to the organization before we. Uh, continue that, though, I think we have about three people, um, were really looking out for that um last position right now. Um. As mentioned before, we, the executive director position has been um published, is my understanding, though no word on any applicants yet. Uh, given that the HR director uh or HR person who's handling this uh at the county just got back. Um, this week, uh, it's my understanding that we're not a hundred percent sure, um, how many applicants we may have or may not have. So we'll keep you all updated on that process, but once that ball gets rolling, I'm sure we'll. Uh, hopefully, work fast and hard to bring someone in, uh, 'cause I know we need it. Um. Related to housing, as you all may have heard, the tariffs are now in in place. Um, and one area where that impacts is housing, uh, because of the terrorists specifically on Canada and their wood. Um, so with the increase of twenty five percent, there is a possibility that. Within a couple of months, based on some experts' review, um, that could impact uh the supply of. Especially our community, which has already had a huge impact on the cost of supplies for constructing housing. But it most likely will only have a continued uh impact. Now, there's reports that supposedly he's gonna overturn it tomorrow, and go back on it, but there's no. You know, uh, there's no guarantee, it's a roller coaster, and it probably will continue to be a roller coaster, but um just want to. Make that preemptive, um, and related. Not related to that, but going back to Regional Housing Authority, I think I missed one thing, uh, that is the county's development project, um, as you all have probably heard by now. Um, the county has switched developers from, um. I forget his name, Adam. Yeah, I'm murder it to uh. Oakwood um developments, um, and they're working out the details, and I'll spare you the very exact details, but. Uh, the Regional Housing Authority will vote on whether or not we take on some of that liability, the developers that asked us to take on the liability. We're uh not sure as to what that really means and what the liability uh entails, so we're gonna be, um. Noticing a executive session to kind of get some advice on that, to see what that really means, um, and hopefully. Uh, based off that, uh, there may or may not be movement um for that project. Um, so the project itself is an uncertainty, they won't know the price until the eleventh, I think, is the final day that the. Uh, developers agreed to um share the price. Um, and if it's outside of the price range that um buyers were at, they're probably gonna uh. Scrap the project not fully, but uh continue it on for next year, um. There'd be a lot of complications if you were to massively increase the price. Um, with the buyer specifically, they'd have to go back to their loan providers who they got quotes from for a loan, and it'd be a. Huge mess, so they probably have to go back to see uh the affordability, and of course, that's where the tariffs really. If this continues on, maybe the supply by then, and the tariffs continue. Maybe the supply by then would impact the pricing of those homes too, depending on what they're using, so. Fun, fun stuff. But the good news is, we just approved two of the over two hundred units we need for rental, so we're working towards it, and I think. Um. Yeah, I I still feel hopeful about it, they're still continuing on their process, uh, though there is heavy pushback against this. They're still continuing the process um for their Harrison Ball Field Planning Master Plan. Um, they do, the county does have some concerns, uh, specifically with the amount of public backlash to that project. Um, so keep that in mind when you have conversations with community members about the importance of showing that.
Thank you. Other council reports? Yes.
Um, so as the um. The regional coordinator of our point in time count, which took place the last week of January, we have preliminary results. And they're shocking. Um. We counted eighty unsheltered homeless, homeless in Lake County. And uh the the more granular data will be released. I think in a few weeks, but I I do have just one detail to report that, um. That sort of. Clarifies for me how much our current unhoused situation is directly tied into our housing crisis. And that is that over half, half of those eighty. Are homeless for the first time. And newly homeless within the last year. Um, with no aggravated conditions, which were listed as things like addictions, mental health. Some of those other correlated factors that we often, um, you know, correlate with. Been chronically unhoused, so that, I mean, the good news is that gives us the scope of the problem. Um, and and that that it's a daunting problem, and that it's really gonna take a. You know, a community effort to. Start to crack into that a little bit, my program has already housed thirteen in the last year, so that. You know, that's progress, but. Um, bear in mind also that we are not even at the worst of our housing prices yet, and we're years away from addressing it, so that problem's gonna get worse. Um. Had something sort of related to that to share, but I can't remember it, so I think I'm finished.
Excellent.
What was the, if the point in time count was eighty this year, what was it last year?
It was not, so there really hasn't been a good comprehensive effort. In um, like, Lake County. Um, and that's partly just because. The um, there hasn't been a program like ours that already, I mean, we precounted most of those people, very few of those. Cuts were people that were not on our radar already, and that was our strategy going into it, so, um. Uh, uh, oh, here was the other, the other bit of info I wanted to share, that our numbers and our. Percentage related to population is way higher than the other counties in the upper Arkansas region. And higher than Summit as well, so as a percentage of population, that's kind of a national metric on how. And the severity of your homeless problem, that um we are sort of off the charts here. Um, and bear in mind also, in a, in a. You know, a point that's not very hospitable to be unhoused, so, um. Yeah, higher than Chaffey, Vermont, Summit. Um, and Park, I believe, so. Yeah, again, the good news is now we we have a number, and we can, you know, continue to start chipping away.
And I just want to clarify a couple of points there, at the point in time count specifically counts. Only homeless, completely. Uh, void of proper shelter, um, or any human hospitable shelter, whereas. Uh, counts we've used before counts, uh, more true, you know, what we consider homeless in the industry, which is like doubled up units and other external factors.
Couch surfing.
Um, couch surfing, uh, those are not factors at all considered in the point in time count, and is purely people basically living in the streets or living somewhere where they should not be living. Um, so that is eighty of our community members sitting in places, eh, either streets, RVs. Eh, just places that aren't meant for human habitation, um, you know, we'll get the final count, but eh, eh, just really want to highlight that compared to the data. I know I've been saying this for years, but it's just true, and if we don't do anything about it, and if we don't move towards funding some of these programs. Eh, it's gonna continue to be true, but we are the most cost burdened rent, uh. Uh, county in the entirety of Colorado, per capita, um. We are also, uh, one of the lower income counties. Um, in our community, and now we are reaching veil levels of rent, I, for example, can't. Find anything less than two thousand one hundred, and two thousand one hundred is for a really, really crappy. Uh, makeshift home that doesn't even have proper heating. Or unless I want a room with someone, I can then pay two thousand one hundred for a literal room in a shared home, so. Um, now I know that's not the case for everyone, but. Eh, I just really want to highlight that that is the issue now, uh, my services, I, I'm the only person who works through C four direct service. And I've already seen a higher, a record breaking number for assistance for utility assistance. That number is only increasing, I'm only getting more and more calls, when this is supposed to be slowing down, it's actually speeding up and crippling my capacity to do other work. Um, and it's gotten to a very unsustainable point in our community. Uh, especially given the nature of the jobs that a lot of our community has, such as construction or very seasonal dependent jobs. Um, like, uh, literally ski industry or construction or any other, so I just really want to highlight that. If we don't support programs like Full Circle Rental Assistance Program, if we don't support programs and organizations that are doing this preventative work. With actual financial support, we are going to be the ones who are responsible. In part for a lot of the people who are losing their home, unfortunately, Colorado does not have any um ability to impose any type of. Rental restriction on the ever increasing prices of rent. Uh, we've seen multiple times now that renters are seeing more than two hundred, three hundred dollars a month, or not a month, sorry, a a yearly increase. Uh, basically a month they're being charged two hundred to three hundred more, um, every year. And it is completely unsustainable for our community, and if we don't seriously sit down to talk about these solutions. And talk about what policies we can impose, such as um some of the policies that Chapin has worked on, but. Also, uh, the funding to support other programs, we're just gonna. Become exactly what everyone says we shouldn't become, which is another Breckenridge or Beaver Creek or a veil. It's only a matter of time at this point, and if we don't sit down and seriously address this as a crisis as it is. I I I'm sorry, but like, you know, even I'm not gonna be able to live here, this is where I grew up. I've lived here my whole life. And sure, maybe I want to explore other places, but I would want the option to come back, and I lost that at this point, I haven't given up any hope that I can live here. Growing up here, you know, I talk, I hear about all these people from the community who always talk about how they're Levville natives, and they've been here for generations, and. They deserve to stay here too, and I've had so many people who I've worked with, who have been moved out, who are older, who've been priced out of the market because. They can't afford to pay their property tax anymore, or because their landlord decided to hike up their prices over a thousand dollars in the past two years. And it's just ridiculous that we. Eh, it just genuinely feels like we don't sit down and have this conversation as a genuine issue in our community, the same way that we've had the discussion. About the temporary use permit for fucking bike race. I I just don't know what else to say, it's beyond ridiculous that we can sit down and make time for a bike race. And have joint work sessions for that, but we don't do that for housing when there is literally eighty people. Approximately, probably more homeless people in our community, and we're literally losing people who have lived in this community for years. And people who are gonna have to move, such as myself, I, it's, I think it's time that we just set that aside. And we really sit down and have these joint work sessions about how are we gonna achieve the numbers? That the region, or that the housing needs assessment said, because we have not had any of those discussions whatsoever. And I I just don't feel like it's appropriate for us to wait anymore.
Thank you, Christian.
Yeah, I think, um. And not just for the people who've looked here for their whole lives, but what about the futures of our kids? We would love to bring those, keep those features in our, you know, just one quick clarification, the eighty, that was the count of unsheltered. Homeless in our community, there was a count of our sheltered homeless as well, and that was twenty, so really the number was a hundred. And as Christian sort of alluded to, we probably missed it, it's just some folks. Um, I'd like to have proposed that we not have a work session, but we be, that we have a. Town hall on this issue, similar to the one that we had recently on immigration. Um, I think Christian's right, you know, we, everybody recognizes that we have a crisis. I don't think they really recognize what a crisis is in this context, it's an emergency. This is an emergency, and we need to start treating it like one.
I think this is a very important conversation, but. If we're gonna have a discussion, it belongs in a different part of the meeting.
Yeah.
So, um. Let's not drop this. But for the purposes of our meeting. Let's move on. To the public meetings planner.
Nothing next week, huh?
Uh. Please remember the short term run on workshop on the sixth, I understand there will be a Zoom option, question mark, hopefully?
Hopefully.
Yes.
We'll see.
Um. Then we have our regular meeting on the eighteenth, our work session on the twenty fifth, which was confirmed today, will be in CMC Room four oh one. At six PM. We actually do have a Laura Board meeting on April third. Thank you for all of the, you know, the. Kerfuffle over whether we're gonna piggyback one on before this meeting tonight. That's kind of a long story, but we can talk about it at our next Laura meeting, and that is all that I have. On the public meeting plan.
So the, the. Work session for the twenty fifth is canceled and replaced.
It's it's still a work session, it's just, it's instead of the legal training, it's the joint city-county session. Um, so we can, so we can come to. An agreement on some of these lifetime questions, because the permits are are about to be submitted, and so it's a little bit time sensitive.
So the legal training hasn't actually been rescheduled.
Correct.
Concretely, yeah, okay.
It's still out there in the weeds, it'll find us.
Yeah.
Soon, I believe, then. Uh, are there other additions to the public meetings planner? Or subtractions?
Mayor.
See, yes.
Uh, I would just point, I would just point out that tourism panel meetings have been changed. To the second Tuesday of the month. There was a new um panel member that uh had a con, had some conflict with being able to. Attend uh meetings on the third Tuesdays, so those have been switched to second Tuesdays of the month.
At the same time?
Yeah, same time, same time, same place, to just the second Tuesday instead of the third Tuesday.
Okay. We will adjust that, thank you. If there are no further changes or updates to the public meetings planner, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Luna, let's say.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Then at eight thirteen, thank you, at eight thirteen PM, uh. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
So many things we need to kick off, well, from.
All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, Lori, thanks.